matters. The American District Executive Session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion?
No.
In a second?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're going to Executive Session. We plan to be back at seven thirty.
Okay, thank you. We're back from Executive Session. Mr. Mahmood, may I have a roll call, please?
Shirley. Ms. Bogushevsky. Ms. Centafonte. Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Here.
Ms. Trillo?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have some minutes in our packet tonight. I'd like to do that first. For the Executive Session minutes, there was an error in the way they would transcribe. There's some minutes appended to pages two and three that are from a previous meeting that we already approved. So this is only the brief Executive Session that we had before the last meeting. So this is for... So I'll take a motion to approve the Executive Session minutes from the meeting on June 26th.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we also have the public meeting minutes from June 26th. I'll take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion... I forgot to ask, discussion? Discussion? No. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Also, we had some correspondence that is listed on your agenda. Now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Schiff for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President. Gillette, I am pleased to share some great news from around the district with our Board of Education and community members this evening. Congratulations to the Hillsborough High School boys' track four by eight hundred relay team made up of Dominic Donardi, Thomas DeLucia, Mitchell Barron, and Jimmy Shipley... Oh, Jeremy Shipley, excuse me. The relay team competed in the New Balance Nationals Outdoor Meet held June 16 through 18 in Greensboro, North Carolina. The relay completed the emerging elite division and competed in that division and came in first with a time of 7:51:48. Congratulations, guys. Job well done. Although many people may think that the summer months are quiet in our schools, that is definitely not the case. During the summer, we have several exceptional programs that provide our students with amazing enrichment and academic opportunities. This week and last have been very busy at the Hillsborough Middle School with both our summer enrichment programs as well as the English Language Arts Learner Summer Program. The summer enrichment program had 360 students register for last week and 292 students register for this week. These classes include everything from basketball and cupcake decorating wars to robotics and acting. Approximately 100 of our district's English language learners participated in the district's two-week-long ELL Summer Enrichment Program. The program is an academic and enrichment experience that provides opportunities for students to continue their English acquisition during the summertime, both in the classroom as well as via local field trips. Hillsborough High School is also very busy with our extended school year program. The program is attended by approximately 230 students and led by staff members with the assistance of over 135 student volunteers. The goal of the program is to ensure that the district's students with special needs will not experience significant regression in skills during the prolonged summer break. None of these programs would be possible without the help of our amazing teachers, staff members, and volunteers. Thank you all for keeping our children learning and engaged during the summer. That deserves a round of applause.
Okay.
Wonderful summer program. So that's all I have this evening, Mr. Schiff.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Let's see. We're going to go to... Oh, committee reports. I do not believe any committees met this month. Most committees will be meeting later in this month, so we'll report at the next board meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I think we're still waiting for the minutes to be generated for the June 15 Governance Committee. So if we can do that, then we can have that for the next meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. All right, so minutes... Okay, so we're up to our first opportunity for the public. This would be for public comments input on the action agenda, for items on the action agenda tonight. If you'd like to have a comment on something from the action agenda, please come to the podium and state your name and address or affiliation. Okay. Seeing none, the board usually comments on the action agenda as we go through it. I'll ask for discussion on the various items. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Schiff for the beginning of action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, approve the following staff members for ELL Summer Enrichment Program, the Science Online Assessment Training, approve participation in Rider University's Science Education and Literacy Center NGSS Assessment Professional Learning, also approve additions to the UMI and the PLC waiting list, approve social studies curriculum writing, applied technology, information communications, text, fax curriculum writing also, as well as the disposal of math textbooks.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that could be... That's a tie. Whatever, it doesn't matter. All right, any... Tie goes to Tom. All right. Right. Okay, discussion on the education agenda items? Anybody have anything?
Yeah, just a quick clarification. For items nine, six, and nine, seven, the changes to the curriculum for U.S. History Two and Applied Tech, Facts, and Information Communication Technology, just high level, what are those? Is it to align any changes that are in state requirements or general review or...
They're up on the curriculum revision cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Mahmood, please.
Shirley. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Dr. Schiff.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources to approve the Comprehensive Equity Plan, approve retirements and resignations, including the retirement of Ramona Lloyd, one of our school psychologists who has been with us since March of 1991, and Robert Swirko, teacher of mathematics at Hillsborough High School, and he has been with us since 1987, and we appreciate all the service that they've had provided for many, many years for the children of this community. Also to approve extra period coverages as listed, co-curricular advisors, transfers, and change in assignments, leaves of absences, and affirm the appointment of teachers, school counselors, long-term substitutes, as well as approving a student, teachers, summer work staff, approving the extended year program staff, and approve the superintendent's miracles.
All right, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay. It was a... Any discussion?
Can we separate out 10.7, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. I actually had a question, and I have to find it, I'm sorry. Where is it? Okay. Under... I can't find it now. Under the... Oh, under long-term substitutes.
10.7.
Yeah. Oh, all right, so I'll reserve it for then. You're right, that's under 10.7. That's why I couldn't find it, because I flipped forward and backward twice. Any other discussion? All right, so let's have a roll call on 10.1 through 10.6.
Shirley.
And?
And then 10.8.
Oh, 10.8 through...
That's included.
Everything but 10.7.
Yeah, everything but 10.7. I forgot the last number is...
11.
10.11. Right. Roll call on all of them.
Shirley. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Do we need another motion for 10.7? All right, motion for 10.7?
So moved.
Second? Anyone? All right. So any discussion?
Just a... I just had a quick clarification. Under long-term subs, number five, should that be designated as a coach?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So what is... It'll be corrected on the minutes. This just needs to be separated out.
Oh, it should be in a different category?
Yep.
All right. That was my question also.
It's a long-term sub, it's not a replacement?
No, it's a coaching.
It's an appointment as a coach. Right, it's an appointment as assistant coach.
It should have been under... Right, so number five, that person that's listed as long-term substitute but is actually a coaching position should have been under a different heading of coaches, not under long-term subs. But that's a clerical error, we can still vote for it, right?
Yeah, and it'll be corrected in the minutes.
Okay, it'll be corrected. So we already have a...
Can we separate that out? I didn't see any resumes or anything come our way. I thought that was going to be the new way that we do things, but maybe I'm mistaken.
For...
Coaches.
Okay. So we'll vote on 10.7, everything except long-term substitute number five? Is that your preference?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let's have a roll call for number five.
Shirley.
Under...
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Do we need another motion?
Yes, we do, yes.
All right. Motion for 10.7, long-term substitute number five.
Which is really the assistant.
Which is really the assistant football coach.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Got it.
All right, discussion? Any more? Let's have a roll call.
Sure. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve monthly bills lists and line item transfers.
Motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay.
Got it.
Discussion on those two items. All right, roll call.
Shirley. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Ms. Trillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. In your packet, we also had an HIB item for review. We don't have to do anything about that tonight. Also, we also received the suspension report, and now we're up to our second portion of the meeting for public comment. Reserve this portion for public comment on old business or other items, not on the action agenda. Or new business. I don't like the way we do this now, because I don't... Where was new business?
We can do it again.
All right. Any business. I think I find myself saying that every time now, any business. All right. Seeing none, any old business or new business from the board, not action agenda related. Anybody have anything else they would like? Okay. At tonight's meeting, we are here foremost, part of the meeting, to appoint a candidate to fill a school board vacancy. Tonight, we have... We solicited for candidates to submit a letter of interest to the school district. Ten candidates have submitted letters. The way we're going to proceed tonight is we're going to give each candidate... I have them in alphabetical order here. We have each candidate come up, as I call your name, come up to the podium, and you can make a statement. We have all... We've received... All board members have received your letters and read them. If you'd like to highlight anything from your letter or say something else about yourself, your qualifications, or anything you'd like, we're trying to be somewhat brief because we want to give the board members also a chance to ask questions of each candidate or of any candidates that they'd like to. So, Dr. Schiff, anything? Mr. Mahmood, actually, I should turn to you because you're the board secretary. Is that the correct procedure?
That's the format. Thank you, Mr. Gillette.
I... Yeah. There was a suggestion that maybe we would have candidates that are not speaking at the problem wait outside. This suggestion came from our attorney, but it's... I don't think we have a consensus on that from the board if we'd like to do that, if we find that would be necessary.
I don't see why that's necessary.
You don't think it's necessary?
Everybody should be able to speak in front of everybody else who are adults.
Okay. All right. So it was a suggestion from Mr. Cooper, and thank you for like winking at me or whatever you just did and nodding at me.
Sorry.
So I would remember. So I'd remember what the suggestion was, but... Because he was like nodding at the door, like, I don't know if we had to go to men's room or if you wanted people to go outside, but we're not going to do that. We're just going to proceed directly with the candidates. Okay. So if candidates, if you're here and ready, come up to the podium as I call your name. We begin with David J. Gordon.
Being first, let me ask how this is going to proceed. There were four suggestions or questions or points that were sent. Well, should I talk about all those or will you let me ask?
Yeah, those were suggestions for things that you can talk about or questions that you might be asked to get your thinking along those lines. So it's absolutely appropriate if you want to address some of those, for sure. Absolutely.
Great. So, good evening. My name is David Gordon, originally from New York, although I've lived here in Hillsborough for 13 years, parent of two children in the school. My son's about to enter at Aris here, and my daughter's at Wood Road School. I wrote in my letter, we... My wife and I, neither of us are from this area, so we chose Hillsborough to settle in largely because we knew the great reputation of the schools. So we're very happy to be here, and I really love the chance to help make... To help continue the great work that is being done. My personal background, I have degrees in music from EL University and University of Texas as a master's. I teach music. I've been teaching for 16 years currently in Montgomery. I also have a degree in educational administration and leadership from Seton Hall University and have a principal certification. And as part of my coursework, I've taken courses in school finance, education law. So I do believe that background in education and administration and the years of experience would give me a perspective in serving on the board. I've become more and more interested in terms of why I decided to put my name forward as a teacher and as a parent and, of course, as a taxpayer, become more and more interested in seeing how the schools are run and become more and more aware of the role that the Board of Education plays in really everything that goes on. So I think I'd be really interested in being a part of that process. Issues that I feel are important in Hillsborough, one thing that I know my family has been concerned about, and I've heard from a lot of other families, is infrastructure concerns. Obviously, every parent wants to know their children are healthy and well-taken care of, so I know there have been issues with lead in water, issues with odors in the schools, with mold, with air conditioning and overheating. So I know a lot of those are being addressed already, but that's something that obviously I think is something we need to continue to focus on. Another issue is social, emotional, and physical well-being. I know we've been... The board recently decided to add some new elementary counters. I think it's a great step in the right direction. My children are still young, but what I've heard from a lot of other parents is that drug use is just something that is on everyone's mind, and I know that's been... Has been addressed. Our parents seem to be happy with the drug sweep that happened at the high school, but that's something that people want to know what's going to happen next, and that's something that I think needs continued analysis. And academics is, I wouldn't say an area of concern, but always something that should be looked at and continued over all of our students, getting the best education they can from the special needs students to get the talent to students, and making sure we continue to expand offerings and make sure that every student continues to get the best education they can, that we continue to be a forward-thinking district. There was a question regarding... As responsible as the board regarding taxation and responsible as the students. Of course, that's on everybody's mind, is fiscal responsibility. In Dr. Schiff's presentation from the spring, it points out that we are already spending $750 less on average per pupil than the state average, so I think this board has done a good job at keeping the financial responsibility while keeping education excellent, so... But that's always something to look at. I thought, you know, their idea is to bring in more revenue, such as expanding the cap program, tuition-based preschool, the idea... I know the strategic plan, I mentioned the idea of looking into Performing Arts Center. That could bring in additional revenue, so that's something else that could, long-term, help with stability. And in terms of preparing students for the future, I think, again, I think we are doing a great job of that. Certainly, our technology in the elementary schools is really very impressive. We can even further look into coding. I know my children have been exposed to programs like Scratch. That could even be expanded. There's a lot of innovative things that can be done with elementary education. But of course, looking at the whole child, foreign language, which we're doing a great job at, and the arts, and really just making sure our students are educated citizens is, I think, a great goal that we could have.
Thank you. I'm going to open up for the board for questions. Mr. Gordon? Yes, Mrs. Haley?
Just so everyone knows, this will be the same question I have to every single candidate tonight. When is the last time that you actually attended a board meeting or a coffee with the superintendent or any of those items that we open up to the public?
Honestly, I really haven't. I have watched meetings online, but it's a fair point that it's been fairly recently that I, like I said, I've sort of become more and more interested, and then this opening sort of came at that same time as I thought I should become more interested. But it is a fair point. As I've been researching and watching, you know, watching videos and reading reports and, you know, I thought, you know, it really is... It would be a good thing to just become more involved in a general sense.
Okay, thank you.
Any other... Anyone else with a question? Mrs. Haas? No? I... Mr. Cooper, yes.
Are you registered to run in the election that's coming up in November?
I'm not.
Okay. Anyone else? I want to tell... I'll address this to all the candidates. If we don't ask you a lot of questions, don't read anything into that. It may be that you've addressed a lot of the things as you did by already answering a lot of the questions that we sent ahead of time. So don't read anything into that at all, please. I don't have a question, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're going to go right to the next candidate. Okay, I'm going to call Nathan Horn Mitchum.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Horn Mitchum. I'm actually a Hillsborough High School graduate, and I am married to a Hillsborough High School graduate, so I'm very familiar with the school district from that regard as a student. I graduated from Georgetown University, and I came back to New Jersey. I started my career at Johnson &amp; Johnson, where one of the things I did there was to start the TAP program at the Hillsborough High School, which was to introduce technology to sophomores and business skills for them. I have three children. My oldest is adopted. She's a senior at Hillsborough. She'll be a rising senior at Hillsborough High School. My youngest will be a kindergartner, so I may be the only person you meet that has both a senior and a kindergartner in the district. Currently, I manage information security for a regional bank based in New Jersey, so I spend my day fighting hackers and solving other easy problems. I decided to run for the Board of Education because having graduated from Hillsborough High School and been a product of its schools, when my wife and I decided to start a family, we moved back to the area because we had that much faith in the education here. And I think it would be a great honor to continue to improve the school district as it serves now. I think when you look at the ratings that you see Hillsborough High School and the Hillsborough School District in national and regional publications, I think you consistently see a district that performs well, but it also is competing against neighboring districts that sometimes outperform it, such as Montgomery and Bridgewater Raritan. So what do I think is most important about our district and what do I think we can improve? From my perspective, it's technology. So I come from the technology space, and I work with a lot of young people. They come out of top high schools and top universities, and the education that they've received to that point hasn't always prepared them for the type of careers that we need. I read an article earlier today that said with automation and outsourcing, a quarter of all jobs of low-income jobs in this country are at risk of being lost in the next 20 years. And so when we take a look at a district like Hillsborough, which has the advantage of being very financially wealthy, we want to make sure that our students are prepared for this changing landscape in our economy. So I think my opportunity to the board would be to bring a very unique technology insight to help develop out the type of curriculum we need across the K-12 areas. And having worked with some of the technology folks in the high school through the TAP program, I think there's a real desire to get that kind of outside business perspective. Finally, you know, I think we should strive to be always on those type of lists where you see the school districts that Hillsborough competes against for families that are looking to relocate. So the last speaker said that they moved to New Jersey, moved to Hillsborough because of the school district. But the property values of the homes in Hillsborough are indirectly tied to the quality of the schools, and so I think as we try and improve the residents' property values and education, you know, we are fighting with families that want to move to this area but may choose another district in the area. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Haley?
Same question. When's the last time that you actually attended a board meeting or a coffee with the superintendent or anything else that we offer to the public?
I was on the Board of Education in high school as the student rep. I was on the Board of Education in high school as the student rep, that was the last time I attended.
Thank you.
Was that before your time, Mrs. Haas?
Yes, actually, just by a year or two. Sorry I missed you.
Nice to meet you.
And other questions? Mr. Cooper, no?
I mean, I, okay. Are you registered to run in the November election?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, so no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm calling Dominic Massey.
My name's Dominic Massey, I've been a resident here in Hillsborough for eight years. My wife and I are both raised in Edison, went through the school systems in Edison, and when we were looking to relocate for our family, my wife being the educator herself for twenty-six years, and I looked at education as a primary choice with two children. We have two children, one is entering a sophomore year, and my daughter will be entering eighth grade. The reason I decided to apply for the Board of Education with the opening was that I wanted to move on from coaching, I'm almost done with the coaching, the youth sports, where I've spent a year with the baseball league, seven years with the youth lacrosse league, and three years with the junior Raiders, girls lacrosse program, to continue to give back to Hillsborough, and what I feel are two of the most important assets that Hillsborough has is the Board of Education and their children. For the second question, what issues are important, there's one issue I think that I share with many people that are very important to me is maintaining a balance between the quality of our education and the services that we provide our students while maintaining a tax burden that's pliable for the residents. There was a question about what the district can do to generate some more revenue, and I think we have to use the assets that we have, which is our buildings and our services. I think maybe we can look into, I know the schools are rented out for the church leagues, for basketballs, for the gymnasiums, but maybe there's some classroom space that could be rented out. At the meantime, while the renting group can be paying a custodian for setup and cleanup, maybe they can be attaining, attending to other issues in the school at the same time. I understand that contracts would have to be reviewed to make sure there's no grievances that can be caused by that. Just to go back to, I wanted to touch on my personal background, because I talked about the grievances, is I am a police lieutenant in Edison Township with twenty-three and a half years' service, and in that twenty-three years of service, I spent two and a half school years as a school resource officer. My educational background is a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science with a concentration in Criminal Justice from Kane University, back then it was Kane College, and I have a MA, Masters of Arts in Educational Administration and Supervision, along with graduate-level certificates in Human Resource Development and Training and Leadership and Management. Also, my twenty-three and a half years as a police officer, I spent approximately eight years in the Traffic Bureau where I was in an administrative spot, where I had to review a lot of budgets and purchase orders, so I have, I'm not nowhere near an expert, but I do have a working knowledge of contracts, bidding, so on and so forth. As far as the last question that I'd want to touch on was, what do you think Hillsborough School District could do to better prepare students for the world? I think the district needs to look into a few more programs to always expand for our Technology is a big thing, that was already touched on, and I just think we have, as any school district does, there's a middle-of-the-road group of students, and those students may not think they're capable of attending college, they may not have the best study habits. There's a program that I've heard about and I researched a little bit on that I think is a great program that maybe the Board of Ed would be interested in looking into, and that's the Avid Program. And what that program does is it concentrates on the students that are, like I said, academically in the middle, and doesn't, don't see themselves attending a college, and that program provides them the help to tap into their inner resources and their potential. So it's just something that, if we have more students that can prepare for college that may not have been college-bound track in their studies, that it would only benefit Hillsborough Board of Education, the reputation of the schools, the test scores, as well as the township as a whole, if the schools get even higher ratings than we already do That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions? Mrs. Haley?
Hi, Dominic. Same question as I've asked everyone else, when's the last time you actually attended a meeting or a coffee with the superintendent, et cetera?
This is my first meeting, and like I had stated, that I, the reason I decided to apply when I saw the opening is I'm now done with the coaching aspect of parenting, so now I think it's time to move on and try to donate my time to other resources in the township.
Thank you.
Tom, you got anything?
I'm good for now.
Brett, do you have anything?
Are you registered to run in November?
No, not yet.
Looking around, not seeing any hands go up. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling up now, Shangar Nandra, Nandra.
Well, good evening, members of the board, and thank you so much for really giving me the opportunity. My family and I have lived in Hillsborough for almost twenty-five years, and, you know, my children grew up here, they've gone through the Hillsborough Educational School System, starting from kindergarten through to the grade twelve. Now, I graduated from universities in UK, I got a PhD in physics, and then I got a fellowship and I was working on some fancy materials as my research projects. After I completed that, I went and worked for a number of research laboratories in the UK, and the last one I worked was in Murray Hill, New Jersey, which was owned and operated by British Oxygen Company. After a while, I think I got interested in the computer technologies, so I trained myself, got some certifications, and I set up a company, a consulting company, to consult with AT&amp;T and Verizon, hired some people, and, you know, did lots of good project work. I was there for almost eighteen, nineteen years. Now, I have, I have three children, as I said, and they went through the Hillsborough Educational System, which I think is pretty solid, given that they are starting to get pretty well-established in the professions they've chosen, and I'm really very happy about that. I know my wife was a homemaker, so, you know, we were able to work with them and also with the teachers, and we used to have numerous teacher-parent meetings as well, because I think we really wanted to be on top of what was going on. So that's, that's my history. Now, you know, given the long history that I have both in academia as well as in industry, I think I, and also the fact that I have brought up three good kids, I think I'm in a very unique position to add some value to the policies that are being developed by the Board of Education, I think I can bring a new perspective. My experience in private industry tells me, you know, what's lacking as far as the new graduates are concerned, which I can really help and develop policies with you, so that's very important. And also, you know, we are, I think somebody mentioned that we are pretty good in the state, but we still stand in about seventy-third position, I think some of the studies indicate that, and I'd like to see us really in the top ten, basically, so we really need to come up with some educational policies. Now, as regards the major issues, I think the, obviously, you know, academic performance is very important, but there is the infrastructure problem, I think our infrastructure is crumbling, we have very limited budget, and that's really the key, and then on top of that, we have drug issues now, I think the drugs are becoming, you know, quite a nuisance for a lot of students, so we need to come up with some creative policies there. So those are the ones I would definitely like to see addressed. And then for better performance and preparing students for the future, I think I'd like to see more parent-student interactions and the board really kind of interacting. I think the board, as a board member, we need to be more aware of the fact that now you have both the parents working, and I think the children are beginning, are finding very little help from at home, so I think we need to come up with some policies as to how we can make parents' life easier. I'm not saying that we go out and spend money, I know it's pretty limited, but I think there are some creative things we can possibly do, you know, some brainstorming. I would also like to suggest that we look at some new courses, maybe optional to start with, and I think two, one is finance, I think finance, you know, people actually go into, just people go out and then all of a sudden you have to say, if we have retirements, you have to invest here, invest there, and people lose, and I think some understanding of what finance is all about would help, and the other thing, which I think was alluded earlier, is, you know, some rudimentary software knowledge as well, because I think the whole industry, well, the whole, the whole country is moving towards artificial intelligence, and it's all driven by software, so I think some good knowledge would help, even if you're not into the science and engineering, it definitely will help, so I think I'd like to see those things introduced. The other thing I'd like to see is languages, obviously, I think you are making an effort in that area as well, and writing skills, very important, I think, because a lot of the communication now is writing, whether it's your emails or whether it's your messaging services, less and less telephones are being used in the offices, and I think good writing skills, in my opinion, is really primarily important in industry in particular. And I think the other thing I'd like to see happen is develop some kind of an apprenticeship programs jointly with the big industries that we have. Now, we have very big on telecommunications, we are big on pharma, we are big in finance, and, you know, I wouldn't hesitate picking up my phone and just calling the senior VP, for example, in the human resources and say, look, you know, this is, we want to sit with you, we want to work with you, and believe me, from my experience, they'll be very open-minded about it, you know, they're just, they're just waiting for a phone call, basically, at least the AT&amp;T folks are, I don't know about the others. So, you know, those are, those are some of my thoughts. Now, in terms of revenue, I think a number of ideas have already been discussed, and there's no harm in pursuing, there's facilities are here, we can probably, you know, have them used for various culture programs as well, but I would also look at cost-cutting, because I think some of the administrative responsibilities or work can be automated, and I think you could actually save significant amounts of money there. You know, I've been a business analyst for a while, and, you know, we convert business processes into computer processing, so I think you can really do those kind of things. That's, that's really the key. Now, answer to your question, the last meeting I attended was about two months ago or three months ago, I can't remember, but I have been to a number of meetings in the past, and I have not registered for the November election, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other, any other questions besides the two? You already preemptively answered, very nice. No other questions? No? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve Ostergren.
My name's Steve Ostergren, I think I might have seniority in the room, I'm not sure about Nathan, I am a proud K-12 graduate of Hillsborough High School and the school system, Woods Road, I was a little Duke, I was a Raider, two children in the school system, one is now in college, going on to be a sophomore, and my son will be a junior in the fall. My background, I have an engineering degree from Rutgers, after an internship, I realized the corporate ladder path wasn't necessarily for me, and I found a way to make a living wearing shorts and a t-shirt. I have my own business, I have a retail store, I have a screen printing shop, I'm a landlord, so I do wear a lot of hats. In addition to my engineering degree, I will say I have a master's in common sense, all those hats that I wear and all those types of people that I deal with and all those, every single day, dozens of employees, deadlines, hiccups, hurdles, you have to find a way to get through them, solve the problem, and keep going and just basically get it done. And I think my background prepares me for that, it prepares me to problem-solve, and that's one of the reasons I am here applying for the vacancy in the board, kind of like Dom said, my kids are older now, I'm no longer coaching, I put many, 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 many years into doing that, and I have a little extra time and heard about the vacancy and it interested me. My wife and I, when, when we decided to find the home, buy the home, we were living in Somerset and we circled Hillsborough as well, one of the reasons, the fine school system. Having grown up in the town, I knew the resources of the town, it's a fantastic town, chose to raise my own family here. School issues that are important to me, I'm an extras guy. Extras, I mean, all the things that keep kids engaged at school. I like to say only half your education's in the classroom, and the classroom, certainly it's important, that's why we're all here, but it's all those other things, it's the wind ensemble, it's the color guard, it's a sports team, it's, I'm not even sure if you have it anymore, I had, I was a member of the Japanese club as a student, I did it because my girlfriend did it. She hosted a student, she talked me into doing it the next year, it was a fantastic experience, I hosted a Japanese kid at my house for a month, for three weeks, and he even came to my wedding twenty years later, and we're still in touch, he's the first guy to like Facebook post, from way over there, but that was really a unique experience, and those are the things that I would be an advocate for, is the extras. And in the perfect world, we have all the extras, we have all the programs, and our taxes go down, but that's not the perfect world, if anybody lives there, let me know and I'll move there too, but, so there's a fiscal responsibility that everybody has, the board has, the school district has, and that's a balance, and so I'd like to try to be part of that. I'm not going to say I have the answers, but again, I think I'm good at looking at a situation and use my master's of common sense and try to find the best solution for that. What do I think the Hillsborough School District could do better? Overall, I think they do a wonderful job, I don't have any complaints, for the most part, like I said in my letter also, we've done just about all of it with my kids in the school system, and my kids got a fantastic education, I think they're well-adjusted, they enjoy going to school. The one thing I would say, potentially just from a personal standpoint, I'd love to see a little more focus on the basics. I know a lot of people talk about technology, Chromebooks are great, but the basics, and that's just simply reading and writing. I know sometimes I'm kind of embarrassed to look at some of the things that my, my kids put out, and I ask them, did you even proofread this before returning it in, but reading and writing, whether it's a profession, a vocation, any job, the ability to communicate is really the basis of, of anything and success, and I think more focus there, reading and writing, I know my kids, they didn't do a whole lot of papers, a whole lot of that hardcore learning to write, in my opinion, learning to write properly. My kids have gotten solid grades, but I don't think they're good writers. That's just a personal thing from my, my experience with my kids. Other than that, be happy to serve on the board, and I attended a board meeting a couple months ago, I spoke on the behalf of one student, I just, not really a personal friend, just to know him through town, but I thought his son was unfairly sanctioned for something that was outside of school for an ambiguous rule that the school system had, and I know last year I also attended, from Mr. Volpe's email, the roundtable community discussion. I only came to one, but I did make it for that one, and it was, it was interesting and I opening, and it was, it was a neat experience, and I have not registered for November yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Okay, don't read anything into that, you did a good job, thank you. Okay, Michael J. Riley.
Good evening. I've lived in Hillsborough for seventeen years, I've been to many board meetings, I took part in the strategic, strategic planning, and I rarely miss a coffee social with our esteemed superintendent. So when the seat came available, I believed I could help. Many of you know me as the owner of Hillsborough Funeral Home, and over the last seventeen years, I've helped thousands of families. What you don't know about Mike, the funeral director, is I'm a former member of the YMCA here in town, Mary Mother of God CYO, Hillsborough Little League, for many years I coached Travel Rec and CYO Boys and Girls Basketball, Hillsborough Little League, Junior Raiders Football, Rec Softball, I'm the past president of the Diamond Club at the high school, I volunteer with the Special Olympics here in town and in Somerset County, I'm a volunteer firefighter here in town with the Hillsborough Volunteer Fire Company Number Two. Due to the mutual respect and support of each other, I was named an honorary member of the Hillsborough Police PBA 205 last year. All four of my children went through Hillsborough Schools. My wife is a special education teacher at Woods Road and has worked in the autism program since 2007. When asked, I've supported every club and every team in town, I've supported the teachers, the staff, the schools and the programs. I'm part of the Hillsborough High School internship, internship program, where students intern at the funeral home twice a year. I've been around and I've been involved in every aspect of this great town. I understand that this position is only four months, so I'm not going to stand here and say, I can get this done and I can get that done. What I'm saying is I think I have something to offer, and if you put me on the board, I'm willing to help in any way I can. As I said, I don't miss a coffee social if I don't can't, I've been to many board meetings, I did the strategic planning, and I figured we'd start with baby steps and maybe just get in a little slow and then register maybe to, to move on. Thanks.
Thank you. Board members? Board members from Mr. Riley? Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thanks.
I'm going to take a deep breath and then call up Jaya Somuramasami Shankar.
Oh, that was for a fact.
Thank you. It was the deep breath.
I just kept my middle name there because I recently changed my last name, so a lot of people in Hillsborough know me as Jaya Somuramasami, so, okay. Good evening, everyone, so I'm Jaya Shankar. I live with my husband and two daughters, we moved to Hillsborough about four years ago. To give a little bit of background about my education and work experience, I have a doctorate in analytical chemistry from FDU University. I am currently working as an associate director at Janssen Pharmaceuticals, this is part of Johnson &amp; Johnson, and in this role, I support the drug development process to bring new drugs into the market. I, I strongly believe that education is the foundation for the future success for children and family, and that's one of the reasons why we moved to Hillsborough, because the school district is so good. is so good. I'm interested in applying for this position, not only because both my daughters are part of the Hillsborough School District, but I love contributing to the community that I live in because I've always been giving back to the community for a really long time. To answer your question ahead of time, I may not have attended a board meeting in the past, but I'm very active in the school district in the sense I'm an Amsterdam School Home Association Board member. I volunteered and organized many events in both Amsterdam School as well as Otten Road Intermediate because that's where my two daughters go. And I'm also a co-leader of the Girl Scouts Troop 60643 in Hillsborough. So these are some of the experiences that I have from living in Hillsborough. But when I was a grad student at Purdue, I was still doing a lot of voluntary activities even at Purdue. And I am, I love, like, I have a lot of passion towards education. One of the things is, reasons is, I was also a teaching assistant in Purdue and I got a really good glimpse of the teaching profession there. So I believe that the unique blend of professional background and the passion for giving back to the community makes me a good candidate for the Board of Education. For me, education is a two-way street, both students and teachers and to some extent or most extent, right? The families also have to put in effort. I want to start with positive things. Our school district is rated within the top 25 of approximately 240 school districts in the state of New Jersey. In the areas of safety, athletic program, and is rated as one of the best school districts by NISH, the top 25, right? There are many positives to our school district. We provide like individually tailored experiences to the students depending on their levels. We give a very well-rounded exposure to the students through various clubs and events. But I do believe that some, there are some opportunities that we can work on. One of the things I hear from my friends in the township is, can we work with students more closely so we can help them maximize their potential? There might be students who are very close to, let's say, getting advanced, but they might have missed the cut off by a very few marks. So those students and the parents need to be made aware ahead of time, like where they stand, so the kids have the opportunity to improve during the school year. And the other thing is, like, we all know ours is a growing community, we have more and more people coming into Hillsborough. So I want to understand, like, the plans for us to maintain the education quality and the school infrastructure while accounting for this community growth. The other thing that I see is, of course, it's discussed everywhere, the budget. We, the residents of Hillsborough, we are already paying quite a bit amount of taxes and I believe, I feel it will be inappropriate or it's not fair to ask for more. So we need to come up with creative ways to increase the revenue for the school district without asking for more. And I do know that our school district has partnership with corporations. Maybe we can identify ways to increase the corporate funding or more corporations. And also, like, I was just talking to one of my friends and she was telling me that, oh, she went to the Bridgewater Mall for shopping and at the counter, they asked her, "Do you want me to round up the total?" And she didn't really understand why they wanted to round up the total and then they said, like, the extra change, if you round up the total, the extra change goes to the Board of Education for the Bridgewater Township. So that change might be very little, but if you're looking per day, how many people are shopping on a monthly basis, on a yearly basis, that might amount to a pretty good amount. So I feel like there are ways out there that we need to be more creative, that we can identify that will help with the board. So I'd like to conclude with this, that I feel that I'm confident that through the years of experience in industry plus combined with my commitment towards education and also the passion to give back to the community, I believe I'll be able to be successful in this role and I look forward to be part of the Board of Education and serve the community. And to answer your question, I haven't registered yet, but I do know the deadline is end of this month and I'm going to register for the Board of Education. Yes?
And then just, when was the last time that you attended a meeting or a coffee with a superintendent?
Like I said, I haven't really attended the Board of Education meeting, but I'm very active in the community because I am part of the ASHA School Board and I do give back to the community a lot.
Thank you. Oh, other questions? No? All right, thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
The Raines, what's up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board administration. I'm very happy to be here tonight, thank you for having me. Many of you know me quite well, since I was a board member for over three and a half years. Just about a year and a half ago, I left the board. I have two daughters, one who graduated and is going to be a sophomore in college, the youngest one is a rising senior. Both of them have benefited from the nationally recognized education that our township offers, which of course was one of the chief reasons my husband and I chose to relocate here 17 years ago. Since the time I moved here, I have been active in the community and actively trying to better our district. Having served on the board, as I said, for three and a half years, I was a member of both the Education and Human Resources Committee during that time. And prior to that, I spent eight years as a member and then six years as president of both the Triangle HSA, the Otten Road School HSA, and another six years on the Joint Council as president of the Joint Council of HSAs. So I've been working with the administration in some way or another for 12 years, I think. I was honored to be a board member when we strove to increase the quality as well as the opportunities available to our students while staying within the limited resources that we have. I have no agenda, except that I want to help. I want to continue the great work that I, that we all did to ensure that we maintained or improved the quality of education for all of our children and the opportunities that are available to them. Because of my previous tenure and training, my learning curve would be basically non-existent. To accomplish the important work of the board to give the best education possible in this challenging economic environment, it's really important, and even increasingly so, that members of the board are committed, knowledgeable, caring and independent thinkers, that they educate themselves thoroughly on all of the issues facing our district. It is important that the board member you select this evening is available to regularly discuss the issues with our many concerned citizens. When I was a board member, I held myself to the highest standards on all of these points and would continue to do so, of course, if selected. Perhaps of paramount importance is the issue of commitment. As a reminder, when I served previously on the Board of Education and on the committees, the two committees I served, I only missed one regular meeting and no committee meetings during those three and a half years. Professionally, I'm a scientist. I have a doctorate in biochemistry, cellular and molecular biology from Johns Hopkins University School of Medicine. I have been an adjunct professor at several universities over the course of my career. I've worked with the U.S. State Department and U.S. Agency for International Development for the past 24 years and advise on issues involving science, technology, health and education policy. I've worked collaboratively, as you can imagine, with large and diverse groups of people across many different countries to harmonize goals and institute effective and progressive programs in the context of ever shrinking budgets. My training has taught me to analyze broad sets of data to solve difficult problems and to be logical and creative in my decision making. I've also served for eight years as the Board of trustee, as a trustee at Cedar Crest College, three of those as part of the executive committee. I participate in all aspects of the governance of the college, including finance and budget, curriculum and academics, and student life and enrollment. This experience has provided me with insight into what our children need to succeed after they leave Hillsborough Schools. Perhaps most importantly, all of my experiences have reinforced for me that an excellent education is the foundation of success in our society, whether you go on to a job immediately after school or higher education. I outlined my priorities in the letter, in my letter of interest, so I won't repeat them here in the interest of time. But I did want to address the two additional questions that you posed online. With respect to balance between economics and quality schools, I believe the district has moved as necessary into shared resources where possible and where appropriate and put in place the ESIP program, the Energy Savings Improvement Program. Much of this was accomplished when I was a board member. I'm happy to say there's more we could do. I think there are additional gains we can make by looking carefully at how we can better accommodate our many students that we send out of district, sometimes costing the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars with limited state reimbursement. I participated in the district's strategic planning exercise and offered the suggestion of using our vast resources here in special education and our wonderful staff to develop a center of excellence for special education, to try to not only bring our own students back into district, but also encourage other districts to send their students here rather than to higher-priced private schools with no annual caps on tuition or tuition increases. I believe that our district does a good job for the most part in preparing our students for the world in which they would live and work, but we could do better. We could form partnerships with area businesses to offer students internship opportunities outside of those available for the REACH program that was mentioned previously. We could also offer varied enrichment opportunities for students and families beyond elementary school to promote the love of education and encourage our students to follow their dreams. We could offer international travel opportunities over spring break instead of over the summer when many students have to work to encourage more students to participate. Lastly, we can offer additional courses through partnerships with RVCC and through making online learning available, especially in foreign languages. In closing, I would be happy to continue my work to build a quality, forward-looking education system that prepares our children to compete in an increasingly complex job market and college market. I would be committed, accessible and make decisions based on valuing children first in a fiscally responsible way. I thank you for your time, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions, I have not yet registered. And my last board meeting was in September and prior to that, as I said, January of 2016, previous three and a half years plus, every year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Mrs. Haas? Mr. Trujillo? No? Right? Anybody? All right, thank you. Perfect. Okay, I'm calling up Kiru Tangavellu.
Good evening. My name is Kiru Tangavellu. I'm living in Hillsborough for the last five years. I'm father of two kids, age of three and five. I have master's in computer applications and I'm working in the information technology industry for the last 16 years. Currently, I work as an architect in the information technology for TD Bank. The reason I decided to run is I want to be part of the system, understand the current challenges and help in any way, find the best optimal solution that we could, you know, reach our goal or target state. In fact, that's what I do in my day-to-day life currently. I get into multiple projects where I don't, where we have a lot of unknowns, a lot of deadlines, timelines, but the goal is to understand where we stand today and where we want to be in future and how do we get to it within the operating boundaries. Of course, we cannot always get the best, but we have to find the best within the operating boundaries. So, next, moving on to what is a critical issue for me today in the education system or in Hillsborough education system is, I would say, managing the budget, generating more revenues and moving the education in a direction towards the future demands. That's what I see as most critical issues. That doesn't mean that other issues like drug security, food, water, infrastructure are not important. To me, all of them are equally important. We cannot let one go down because of the other. But what is more critical at a given point of time is what we need to look at it and tackle that issue. Regarding revenue generation, right, of course, yes, can we increase the tax? Of course, yes, but is it going to solve our problem forever? I would say no. Maybe two years it will help us, but again, we will be in the same situation. So we have to think innovatively how we could increase our, you know, increase our revenue other than tax, as well as look at our current expenses and see where we are spending more money or any part of the money and why we are spending and what is it giving us, right? Those are the two ways to manage our revenue better. Of course, I have some ideas, but one of them is leverage to generate new revenue or more revenue. Leverage our parents' time as well as our buildings, right? If you see, every week at least three to five birthday parties are going in the town. So if we can get at least 20% of them to be done in our buildings, that's a major revenue boost for us. Of course, we have to, you know, market it better, we have to connect some of the, I mean, the rooms with magicians or maybe clowns or maybe, you know, face painting people. But yes, we have to aggressively work towards it and I'm pretty sure we can, that's one of the way we could revenue, I mean, generate revenue. If we can get three parties, I mean, I did a math and we could annually minimum generate at least $9,000, which we can use to fix our, maybe a sports ground or maybe for our musical band, we can buy more costumes. Like I see a few months, a month back, I attended the Board of Meeting and I saw that we introduced a new uniform for our musical band, so we can definitely increase our revenue one way or another. So the last thing I want to touch on is where do we want to head or how do we want to, what do we want to do for the future education, right? Of course, education, math, science, physics is a critical core part of our education system, but is that good enough to get our kids to the future? I would say no. Equally important is their social behavioral skills as well as critical thinking. They should be in a position to make right decision or correct decision at a given point of time. So the kids, especially the young kids, trust and believe in teachers more than anybody else. With that said, we should be seeding their right thoughts, right skills in their mind and tell them what is right, what is wrong, because that's what going to shape their future. It's not just the education. So with that said, I think apart from education, the social behavioral skills is must and it should be part of our education because that's what is really going to help in their future. And also, we should be introducing some vocational courses, rather than seeing a student failing in his academics or seeing as a failed kid, we should see or set a platform for him so that he can shape up his career. He maybe want to become a mechanic or auto mechanic or something else, not everybody is going to become a doctor or engineer, right? So definitely, I think our school system should have at least the platform for the kid to learn something of their own interest when they go up to the high school. With that said, I already mentioned I attended, last board meeting was like a month back when we introduced our musical band's uniform and pretty soon I will be applying or registering for the November. That's it. Thank you for providing this opportunity.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board members? No? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thomas Zobelli.
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 Good evening, members of the Hillsborough Township Public School Board. My name is Thomas Zobelli and I wish to express my interest in filling this board vacancy. I'm a lifelong resident of Hillsborough and a 2012 graduate of Hillsborough High School. Following graduation, I attended Raritan Valley Community College where I received my liberal arts degree with a focus in the social sciences. I went on to Rutgers University, earning a BA in political science and graduated with honors. During my years in high school, I was a member, was a member and later an Eagle Scout of Troop 1776. To become an Eagle Scout, I had to find and organize a service project. My project was completed at Ann Van Middlesworth Park in the Sensory Garden. The project consisted of bricklaying from the entrance of the garden to an existing pathway as well as some planting. The purpose was to make the garden more accessible to those with disabilities. In completing my project, I learned the value of hard work, organization, commitment and most importantly, teamwork. Since my time in scouting, I joined the Knights of Columbus and have been an active member for the past five years. member for the past five years. In my professional life, I am a program unit specialist for the New Jersey Department of Labor in the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation Services, or DVRS for short. The goal of our division is to assist those with disabilities gain employment. My work responsibilities require me to work daily with clients, listening to challenging issues, answering difficult questions, and sometimes being the bearer of bad news. Working with these clients includes dealing with very sensitive and emotional issues, experience that I think would be useful as a school board member. In 2015, I ran for a school board position while still in college, not only to show my interest, but also to encourage more young people to be active in public service. As a more recent graduate of Hillsborough High School, I really, I believe I can bring a unique and perhaps overlooked perspective to the board. Additionally, I believe that it is vital to be active, be an active participant in the process, and that is exactly what I have done, continuing to attend school board meetings, ask questions, and even challenge the board on issues of importance. When looking at the vast number of issues that concern me, the number-one issue is the current school funding formula. For years, districts like Hillsborough continue to see flat funding or, in some cases, a reduction in school aid. This has presented major problems for Hillsborough, where tough choices like reducing staff, putting off certain projects have been made in order to keep our heads above water. Now, I know that there has always been continued discussion about hiring more staff or putting AC within our school district, along with a myriad of other needs and desires. However, many of these proposals simply cannot be carried out until the school funding formula has been revised. Additionally, the issue of providing a quality education while keeping taxes in check has always been a true balancing act. My take on the issue is to get the community and its citizens involved as much as possible. I believe talking to a wide array of groups, from the young to the old and everyone in between, is the best way we, as a board, can formulate policy and make informed decisions as to what the needs and desires are of everyday Hillsborough residents. After all, if there is very little involvement and true engagement from the community, oftentimes initiatives the board might have will be less likely to succeed. Though the Hillsborough School District is oftentimes ranked as one of the best school districts, there is one key area in particular that we can approve upon, and that is to give more options to students who have a desire to go into the trades. Though I attended, though I attended college, not every student is cut from the same cloth, and they should not be made to feel that they have to attend college. We instead should embrace this desire by some and work more closely with VOTEC and other institutions to allow these students to explore their God-given talents, to become happy and productive members of our society. Even with all our differences, we share the common goal of providing the very best education for students while still keeping in mind the needs of all Hillsborough residents. With that, I thank the board and fellow candidates for listening to what I believe can make this district the best it can be.
Thank you. Any questions?
Questions? So... Well, I, oh, well, I do remember the question, so. The last meeting I attended was June 26th. I have, I can only count on my hands a number of times that I've missed, and to answer your question, Brett, I applied to run for November and back in April, so, there you go. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope.
Oh, any other questions? No?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zobelli.
Okay. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank all of the candidates for coming out. It was, it was really a great turnout. I didn't really expect 10. The last time we had a board vacancy due to resignation was 2011. I think we had maybe half as many candidates, five, five, maybe six, I'm not sure. So, this was tremendous turnout. I think at least one of you mentioned that you were at a certain point in your life or maybe in your parenting life where you thought you had some time. Well, let me tell you now, you're going to need a lot of time. I think we all probably just began a little smile when we heard that because being a school board member is the most time-consuming and responsibility-laden volunteer opportunity you'll ever have in this town. It's, it's, you'll find it's a great honor to be on the school board, and once again, I thank you. Let me tell you a little bit about the process that we're going to go to now. In a moment, I'm going to ask the, for a motion to go into executive session. We're going to go across the hall into executive session and talk about each of the candidates. I don't know how long that will be. It's not going to be hours, for sure. It'll be, but I, but I, other than that, I don't think I can give an estimate. I'll ask our attorney.
I would give an estimate of what we think it's going to be if we have to come out and let people know we're still deliberating, then we'll do that.
Right, so, it might be 30 minutes, but...
When we start with that.
We'll start with that, and if it seems like it's going to be much more than that, someone will come out. It might be, it might be less. I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to qualify it in any way or characterize it in any way. It could be anything. So, we'll do that. When we come out, I'll ask for nominations, and we'll see how many candidates are, of the 10 are nominated, and then we'll go through a voting procedure, and we might ask the attorney to walk us through that before we begin that part of the procedure. So, right now, let me read this. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows. One, the matter to discuss, the matter to be discussed is the deliberation of board candidates, and number two, the matter discussed in the executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have a motion, please?
So vote.
And a second?
Second.
Should we do a roll call for this one?
You can do all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Oh, yes, and so, sometimes when we go to executive session at the end of a meeting, I'll make a statement that no action will be taken, but tonight, there will be action taken when we come back. All right. Thank you. We'll be back. Ready? Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience. We're back from executive session. I'm going to ask Mr. Mahmood to call the roll.
Surely. Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Yeah, here.
Here.
And Mr. Gillette?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. Once again, thank you for your patience. We deliberated on the candidates, and we had many, many qualified, you're all qualified, let's put it that way, so it was very difficult. That's why it took so long. But I'm going to open for, we don't vote to open nominations on this board, so I'm just going to ask for nominations at this time. Does anyone have a, to nominate? Oh, let me tell you how it works. We'll nominate candidates, and maybe I said this before, we're going to nominate, we'll open nominations, as many nominations as we receive. We will, we will then close nominations, and then we will vote yes or no on each of the nominees in turn in the order in which they were nominated. So...
Do you want me to describe the process?
If you, yeah, if you want to go in full, yes. Thank you, Ms. Lepira.
So, according to your bylaw, 143, you will...
Oh, Mr. Lepira, speak right close.
Sorry.
Sorry.
According to bylaw number 143, you will solicit nominations, and as, and as nominations are made, at that point, once there are no longer any nominations for candidates, then you close the nominations. You'll conduct, as you said, an election on each candidate in the order in which it was received. As soon as you get a majority of the remaining board, which here is five out of eight remaining board members, which is required by statute, then you stop. If you get to a point in which you do not receive a majority, if you don't get five on the first one, you go to the next one. If you don't get five on any of the candidates that have been nominated, then your bylaw indicates that you would conduct basically a runoff election for the candidates who received, the two candidates who received the highest number of votes in that first process. At that point, it's election style, as in, do you vote for candidate A or candidate B? You still need five votes because that's what the law requires, so you would have that runoff election, and if, and if at that point, we still don't have a candidate, then you would look towards the county superintendent to fill it, which they're required to do if you don't fill within 65 days.
All right. I'll take the first nomination. We have to have some nominations.
I'll nominate Thomas Zobelli.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Okay, well, I will, I will second from the chair, so I'm seconding that nomination. Do I hear any other nominations?
I nominate Mike Riley.
And do I hear a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
And second, okay, so that we have two nominations. Do I hear any other nominations?
I nominate Dr. Lorraine Swasan.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second then.
And Mrs. Haas?
Go.
Second. Do we hear any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. We have three candidates to proceed. We have Thomas Zobelli as first.
Mike Riley.
Mike Riley and Dr. Lorraine Swasan. All right, so...
Do I have any other nominations?
Yeah, do we have any other nominations? I already closed it. We don't have any.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're going to proceed. So, we'll vote first. Board members, you vote yes or no? We'll call the roll for Thomas, Thomas Zobelli.
Okay. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
No.
And Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
The nomination fails.
The nomination fails with how many votes?
We have three yeses and three nos.
Okay. Let's proceed to the next candidate, Mr. Riley.
Which is Mike Riley. Okay. Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
No.
And Mr. Gillette?
No.
Nomination fails.
Third candidate, yes, Dr. Swasan.
Yes. Take a roll.
Yes, take a roll, please.
Uh, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Oh, we have five?
We have five.
Congratulations, Dr. Swasan.
We will announce swearing-in.
Uh, yeah, so, I'm in, you want to announce that?
Yeah. So, the, the elected board, chosen board member here is Dr. Swasan with five votes in the affirmative. Congratulations.
So, how, so what about the swearing-in process?
We want to do it at the next board meeting.
That'll be done after the completion of the criminal history record check, and that'll be done at the next board meeting.
The oath will take the oath.
All right, so, we'll, you'll have to proceed with a criminal background check in case anything untoward has happened in the last year, that we'll want to know that, and then we'll, we'll have the swearing-in.
The oath.
The oath at our...
At the next board meeting.
At our next board meeting.
Regular board meeting.
At our next regular board meeting. Thank you again, candidates, and we appreciate your effort, and what a great turnout. Thank you for your enthusiasm, and also, I'll, also want to put out there that there are still two more weeks to file petition to run in the November election. Like I said, it's, it's, it's a great opportunity, it's time-consuming, a lot of responsibility, but it's, ultimately, I think it's rewarding for most of us, anyway. So, Dr. Schiff, do we have anything, do we want to talk about?
Yeah, we just, we're, we're going to be receiving the bids for the air conditioning at Aris, I believe, on Wednesday, Mr. Mahmood?
The 26th?
Yes, Dr. Schiff, we will be opening up at 11:00 a.m.
Okay, we'll, we'll need time for attorney review and architect review before we present it to the board for consideration. However, I think we should try to schedule a special meeting between now and mid to late August so we can begin the work as quickly as possible. The hot days, as we all know, are in early September, anyway. So, this is for additional window units at Aris, which means that the installation could be a rolling installation so we can, we can cool rooms quickly. So, we're going to be reaching out to board members to see if we can find a day, probably the first week in August or the second week in August to try to hold a special meeting. So, our office will be reaching out. Once we have a date that we have a quorum, it probably will be a single agenda item unless something else comes up, and we'll notify the community within 48 hours of that meeting.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kins?
Real quick for that, is, if July 31st is an opportunity, I know, and timing's going to be tight.
It's unlikely, but if we're able to do it, we'll, we'll talk with board members and see if we can do it, but it really only gives us about two and a half days to be able to go through full attorney and architectural review.
Yeah. All right, thank you. We already did our, we already did our comments from the board. We just came back for this, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
May I have executive?
Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, you're right. I have to, give me the agenda.
Actually, can I just say something?
We're not adjourning, we're going into executive, but we will, for something not, for no action at the end.
But wasn't there the option that we were able to have a vote again if we had, if we were going to wait for the other board members who weren't here? I just want to clarify that for the public. We had that option of not going straight to the county superintendent, correct? Vic?
If you, if you didn't get five votes for any candidate after all of the process, then you have 60, you have 65 days to fill it.
Right.
So...
So, we could have come back while we needed for the other board members to attend.
Yes.
That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're, I'm going to read this for the third time tonight. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows. The matter to be discussed is...
A contract.
Superintendent, the superintendent's contract. Do I hear a motion?
The move.
And a second?
Second.